You're good to go.
All right. All right. Order, the Thursday, October 20th, 2022, meeting of the Citrus Zone Board of Appeals. The Citrus Zone Board of Appeals committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings. We ask all members to interact in a polite manner even when there is disagreement. We value the participation of our community and want all participants, including marginalized and marginalized communities, to feel welcome and respected. We ask our committee members and all who participate to commit to these standards to support and respect our community. This meeting is being held in person and it is also available by Zoom and by telephone. And the instructions for that are on the Citrus website, the Zoning Board, the Zonings website. With that, this is the Zoning Board of Appeals website. With that, we will hear the first application of Dawn and Dustin Dietrichson of Seventy Marion Road, requesting a special permit in accordance with MGL Chapter 48, Section 6 and Section 810.2 of the Citrus Zone Bylaws to allow for the construction of an addition to a pre-existing non-conforming single family dwelling located at Seventy Marion Road in Citrus. Do we have representatives? Thank you. Why don't you guys come sit up? Please, your names and address for the record, please.
I'm Dawn Dietrichson, Seventy Marion Road.
Dustin Dietrichson, Seventy Marion Road.
Impala, Doodle, Ocoa, Morcetion Design. We're going to be helping them.
Thank you all. So why don't you walk us through what you're trying to accomplish today?
Yeah, as you would, the existing residence at Seventy Marion Road is a non-conforming structure at the front setback. So we're here seeking a special permit so that we can add in addition to a non-conforming existing structure. At the front setback, it's 23.4 feet where we're supposed to be at 30 feet in our free zoning district. The proposed addition, as you can see on the site plan, is at the rear of the existing structure and does conform to all setbacks on the side and rear in those locations. And the height of the structure will be a two-story structure, but the height of the ridge is only 17.5 feet appropriate. So there's no issue with the height. So everything that we're, everything new will be in performance and we're just looking for a special permit so that we can add on to the existing non-conforming.
Hey, Bob, anything on this?
Not a thing.
I didn't think so.
Couldn't be more scary.
Anything from the folks in the community here today in the room? Anything from anyone online? Anyone that might want to comment? Board, questions, comments? Oh, no.
Very, very.
We have a motion.
I'll make a motion that the board find that the proposed addition at Seventy Marion Road shown on the great consulting plan dated August 22nd, 2022, does not create any new non-conformities and that the extent, to the extent it increases or intensifies an existing non-conformities, such intensification is not substantially more detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood and that we grant a special permit.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 You guys?
Great, thank you very much, so much.
Thank you. You're right. On the second application of Matthew and Kenneth Fleet Kaplan, 58 Branch Street, Citrus, requesting a special permit finding in accordance with MGL 48, Section 6 and Section 810.2 of the Citrus Zone Bylaws to allow for the raising and reconstruction of a conforming single-family dwelling on a pre-existing non-conforming lot at 58 Branch Street. Close floor area. Name, voter?
Thank you. My name is Jeff Ass. I'm a civil engineer with Morris Engineering. Here at the property owners, seeking a special permit in accordance with raising and reconstructing home on a pre-existing non-conforming lot. The property is 58 Branch Street. It's developed with a single-family home that needs all setbacks as well as a detached garage. It does not need the side yard setback. The property itself is conforming with respect to frontage and area, non-conforming with respect to the width. So the proposed home is about 3,800 square feet. It results in a 232% increase. However, it is consistent with the size of other homes in the vicinity. And then the new home does comply with all the property line setbacks. Therefore, this project does not create any new non-conformities. It actually eliminates the side yard setback non-conformity.
I'm just looking at the plan. According to the plan, and that's just a mathematical question, your side yard setbacks are actually conforming as to, what are you saying? Because of the garage, changing the garage is why, why are you not conforming?
Right, the garage is only 2.9 to 12, probably not.
Right, so you're eliminating that. So you're, that's what was, so the numbers here were for the main dwelling, not including the garage on the plan?
That's correct.
Okay. And from, Bob, anything on this?
I, yes, I'm gonna, I'm gonna lie in front of the bulldozer on this one. The project proposes to demolish the house that I grew up in.
Well, we know the, I mean, you know, it's a branch street, right? We don't, everybody knows here, we have, right?
Other than that, I have no problem with it.
I, I understand. And wow. And may I encourage the applicants to deliver to you a momento?
That idea.
All right. All right. Anything from, from the community here on this? Anything from, oh, please, name, name in the.
Christian Deeks, 54 Branch Street.
Butter.
So, yeah, butter, yes. So am I reading this correctly that the new house will actually be closer to our line than the existing house?
So you are.
Right to the.
Yes, right. So yes, it will be, it will be closer to your house, but it is within, it will continue to be within the required setbacks.
Which is what, 15 feet?
15 feet, correct. They will, they will be, I guess 15.7 feet.
And it was 19.7.
And it was 19.6. So it would be approximately four feet closer. That is my reading of the plan.
That's correct. And, and more substantial.
But more in its question because of its linear. Any questions from the Zoom? Nothing? Anything else? Sir? Uh, board? Hey, we have a motion?
I will make a motion that the board grant the special permit requested and in doing so find that the proposed single-family home at 58 Branch Street shown on the Morris Engineering Plan dated 9/15/22 does not create any new non-conformities and that to the extent it intensifies an existing non-conformity, such intensification is not substantially more detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 You guys? Thank you very much.
Name? I have a point of order before we get to the next one. We have a five-member board, three voting members and two alternates.
Correct.
Think it might serve the board to clarify who those voting members are going into a contested variance application.
Right. So for, for the record, it is myself, Mr. P. Ken, and the next one are the voting members, or rather. Okay, does that, that makes sense to everybody?
Makes sense to everybody.
Makes sense to us. Well, there we go. Sorry, I. No, no, I, I appreciate it. In light of the, the fact that this is particularly sensitive. Fantastic, and contest. All right, on the third application, and our final application of the evening, Kenton L., Bonzar Goan, 78 Circle Citrus Mass, requesting a variance in accordance with 950.2C of the town Citrus Zone Bylaws. Specifically, the applicant seeks a variance in the requirements of Section 520.4A, which mandates a 150-foot non-disturbance buffer zone tributary in the Water Resource Protection District for the construction of a single-family dwelling with a five-foot length Citrus Mass. Gentlemen, names for the record, please.
Thank you. Jeff Ass, again, with Morris Engineering. Janice, I have Pre Junior, Pre Michael Marshfield, representing Bonger Zone. Mr. Creed.
And we also have Bea Zoom, Greg Morris.
Oh, great. Great Zoom, excellent. Thank you very much. We're gonna tag this team a little bit. So I, why don't you folks summarize where you believe we stand on this application and our positions and do your presentation. We will then turn it to the audience here and the folks on Zoom. Check it out. And then we will open it up to questions from the board. Okay, that way we can, we can have a little bit of that discussion. We, however, the board may see good to ask questions of these folks and anybody else that's in the presentation. So I'll, I'll turn it over to you.
I think we'll start with Greg to give you an engineering update.
That is.
That makes sense, Greg.
Yes, that makes sense to us as well. And Greg, can you just be a little extra loud because they have some noise cans and stuff going on here that's haunting my ear? So.
Yes, I will. Thank you very much. For the record, this is Gregory Morris, Registered Engineer, Morris Engineering, representing the property owner Kenton Bonger Zone. I'm gonna leave my video off. My connection is a little unstable, but I think you can hear me just fine.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. As you, as you know, this is a request for a variance from Section 520.4 of the bylaw, which is the 150-foot no disturb buffer in the Water Resource Protection District. This isn't a request for a complete waiver of the 150-foot no disturb, but on this site, what we are proposing is a minimum of a 50-foot no disturb buffer in accordance with the plans. Variances should not be easily granted. In my history as a civil engineer in the town of Citrus, going on 14 years now, this is the first variance application I've put before this board and they should not be given easily. Giving a variance doesn't entitle someone or another property owner a precedent. Every application should be reviewed on a case-by-case basis. And in all the land that I've looked at in the town of Citrus, I can't replicate the uniqueness of this lot on any other piece of property I have looked at with respect to a variance from this provision of the bylaw. This lot was laid out in the 1950s. It's a fully compliant zoning. It's located in the R2 zoning district. It was endorsed by the planning board at that time. It has more than 20,000 square feet of land area. It is entirely upland land area. It has requisite frontage on Countryway and Williamsburg Lane. The same owner has owned it since the lot was created, the Bonger Zones. They've paid taxes on the land. In the 1970s, the applicant sold to the town for a $1 purchase and easement, which traversed the southern lot line and created a drainage easement for the town. I would consider this a significant public benefit that the Bonger Zones provided to the town at the time. They allowed drainage on Countryway to go across their property and discharge at the rear of the property. It's evident how the easement was laid out along the side lot line that it was intended not to infringe on the buildability of this lot. In review of the variance, you had asked me to do certain tasks since our last meeting. I've done those. You asked me to collect a water sample, which I've done and I provided you the results documenting the water quality at the outfall pipe at the back of this property. You know, I would note that we were in a drought for the significant portion of the summer. There was little fertilizer being put on lawns. There's obviously no road salts on the road, given the time of year. But you look at the water sample that was given, there's nothing that really stands out that was off the charts. It's not a, it's not an extremely dirty water sample by any means. You asked us to engage in a peer review. You hired Mr. John Chesia of Chesia Consulting. He provided a letter and we addressed his letter. We made some revisions to our plans and we resubmitted those to the board on September 29th. Since that time, we have not heard back any peer review comments. But I can tell you those revisions, I think, addressed the outstanding issues in the letter. We added construction phase items to the plan, including a construction entrance, some additional erosion control details. We added additional details on stormwater, including roof drywell chambers, rain gardens and plantings on the site to handle driveway runoff and roof runoff. We performed some additional soil testing to verify soil type. Since the last meeting, we've been to the Board of Health and the Board of Health has approved the septic system at this site in its entirety. The septic system, as you recall, is a three-bedroom septic system and it's a rather advanced septic system, providing nitrogen reduction capabilities. So in review of the variance, the Mass General Law 48, Section 10 definitions of variance here, there's essentially three prongs to doing the review. It's very specific. The first is that the lot itself has to be unique with respect to the shape of the soil or the topography of the land. We feel that this property is unique with respect to the topography. It was obviously in a desirable spot for drainage when the town of Citrus needed to handle its problem on Countryway in 1970. If this property was at the top of the hill on Countryway up by Ronnie Shown's store, it would not have been chosen for drainage. If it was on First Parish Road by the senior center, it would not have been chosen for drainage. But the town chose this lot because of the topography that directs water to its location. We feel it's unique in respect to that. Secondly, the lot is unique with respect to the shape of the property. When you look at the plan, you'll see that it's a corner lot, the corner of Countryway and Williamsburg Lane. It's generally a rectangular or square lot. That itself is not unique in any way, shape or form. But what is, is the area that's on the lot 150 no disturb setback line. That 150-foot no disturb setback line encompasses the entire buildable portion of this previous buildable lot that was signed off. We felt that this lot met the requirements of being unique with respect to topography and in this case, shape as well. The second prong of the variance standard is that literal enforcement of the zoning bylaw provision would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise. In this case here, literal enforcement of 150-foot no disturb buffer would essentially constitute a land taking. It would render this property completely unbuildable for any purpose. This lot was created as a buildable lot, was endorsed by the planning board when it was built, or when it was created as a buildable lot. Taxes have been paid on it. This provision of the bylaw makes it so that you can't do any of the allowed uses in the zoning bylaw and would render financial hardship on the applicant if that were the case. The third prong, I think, is where we left off. There's two parts to it and that is the relief can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying from the intent of the bylaw. I think the easier part of this here, if we break it up into the two parts, is the intent of the bylaw. The intent of the bylaw, the 150-foot no disturb setback is, is to provide a setback to the tributary and allow runoff or stormwater contaminants to infiltrate, get filtered and minimize impacts on the town's drinking water supply. Now, outside the 150-foot setback on a conventional lot, the Apple Kent or the, you could do whatever they wanted. They could build a house 165 feet away. They could build a 10-bedroom septic system. There's no requirement that they do any stormwater. There's no requirement that they do a fancy septic system. Outside the 150-foot, they can do whatever they want. In this case here, we're not asking for full waiver of the 150. We are providing a minimum of a 50-foot vegetated setback, but we have advanced site controls on a site that will not nullify or substantially derogate from the intent of the bylaw. The controls that we have are with respect to stormwater. We're infiltrating the roof area. We're treating all of the runoff off of the driveway and we're proposing an innovative alternative technology septic system, again, which has been approved by the Board of Health for nitrogen reduction. With those features on this site, we don't feel that we're gonna have a detrimental effect. Now going back to the variance standards, it says substantial detriment to the public good. Now, I'm not gonna say that development of a vacant piece of land into a single-family house isn't gonna have an impact, but will it be a substantial impact? And what we have up on the, on the board there on the easement depicts the Citrus zoning map. What you'll see on that zoning map is that there's approximately 1,400 feet of distance from this site to the reservoir. Inside that 1,400-foot distance, we've drawn a radius around the reservoir. There are 150 other homes that already exist within that 1,400-foot radius. If you look at the Mass GIS map, it shows that there's in the town of Citrus approximately 60 dwellings already inside the 150-foot no disturb buffer. I would say the vast majority of those are without any stormwater controls or any advanced septic systems in place. So this site here proposes the advanced stormwater controls, the advanced septic system, the roof runoff going into infiltration chambers. The driveway goes to a sediment for bay. It goes to a rain garden, goes through a 50-foot vegetated filter before it hits the tributary. Keep in mind, Route 3A has thousands of cars that drive on it a day that literally drive through the reservoir with a zero-foot setback. The runoff from the single-family home will be, will not be substantially detrimental in any measurable form. You've heard, you've heard from me on my representation of this project. I acknowledge we received a letter yesterday from the planning board. I can address that either now or if you want to have the planning board make a presentation later, I can address it then. But I believe wholeheartedly that this site meets the requirements for variance in the town of Citrus. It should not be easily granted. It does not create a precedent that is easily found anywhere else in the town. I can't put my finger on another site that is as unique as this one here. I turn it over to you.
Just heard from Mr. Morris and I found particularly important he's run water tests and he's put certain protections into place that in his conclusion make this property not present a substantial detriment. And I go as far as I believe what he was saying is those protections make this property not pose a substantial detriment to the town's water supply, which is the good that we're talking about when we talk about this bylaw. We have Mr. Chesia here, who we hired to come to a conclusion on that same point. Unless anyone on the board disagrees, I'd love to hear from him next on that point.
Right, and then I'd like you from the planning board and then Mr. Morris. Great commentary on the planning board, but I think that's the right order for. Fantastic for these things because they're all sort of related. So Mr. Chesia, can we hear from you on your analysis?
Sure. So I wrote a letter back in July. I was not asked to review the latest revised data, so that's why there isn't a follow-up letter. And I don't know exactly what you want me to do as far as going through any of my previous comments or recommendations or if there's a question specifically, let me know what, what exactly you'd like me to do. You want me to go through my letter? You want, I'm just, little insight as to what the board would like me to opine on.
I think, why don't you go through your letter and I think some of the key points of your letter? And we will let Mr. Morris respond to those in light of the revised plan. How about we do that?
Sure. All right, and I'll try to be quick and I won't hit, you know, I'll try to hit the high points. I, I think I started with a few recommendations. I mean, they're asking for a variance that's in the Water Resource Protection District. So I recommended that you get feedback from the Water Resource Committee on this and potentially the DPW because it does affect the water supply for the town. So that was one comment. I had another comment that I believe he addressed that talked about wetland delineation on the site and it's my understanding that the Conservation Commission has found no wetlands there. And then I did read Greg's letter. I didn't go through a detailed review of the plan. The last recommendation was that they provide supporting data for the variance. Greg did go through data on the requirements for a variance relative to lot shape and all those conditions, which the board needs to, you know, review and make a determination on. And I also, and this was a recommendation and I know that the site doesn't require a storm, a stormwater permit, but since stormwater is a factor within there, in that area, I said that they should provide the data that you would typically provide with that as support for the variance. And I know there's some stormwater information on here. I did, I don't know if there's been a full set of calculations or any supporting documentation like typically provided for a stormwater permit, but that may be something of interest to the board and that was one of my comments in the letter. What the board asked me for in my proposal, there were, I believe, six items. The last of those six is a comparison of the Water Resource Protection District regulations. So to go through those, one of the first ones was to talk about the quality and the quantity, I believe, of surface water, which would be something as a result of the drainage calculations, which I don't believe have been provided or I wasn't asked to review them. I know, like I said, there's a plan that's been revised that shows some stormwater details on it, but I'm not sure if a detailed calculation of that information has ever been provided to the board. There was a question about the quality of the effluent septic system. I know this Board of Health has approved the septic system, but the numbers used in their calculations for nitrogen are inconsistent with the DEP permit for the system that's used. So I think they underestimated the nitrogen on the septic system relative to that quality of, of effluent and that's in my letter. There were comments regarding the construction and potentially some more stuff's been added on that phase. I think that from my experience, and I've been, you know, a civil engineer probably for 30, almost 30 years now. And oftentimes the single-family house lots are ones that cause a lot of the trouble because you have multiple trades, all driving pickup trucks, limited space, not a lot of room to park. Can't park on Countryway, I'm sure. Williamsburg Lane isn't the widest road. Those are the times that you have a lot of trouble because the, the site contractors know how to control erosion and sedimentation, but the electricians, the plumbers, the carpenters that are packing all over the place, they're not as well-equipped with that information. And that's where you run into your problems. I haven't reviewed that. I wasn't asked to review the revised plan relative to that, but I think it's a significant thing to consider in your decision. And then the other question was property development conditions, whether they're proposed are adequate. They're proposing a deed restriction to a three bedroom house. I think that's reasonable and enforceable. They were proposing a deed restriction requiring the use of low nitrogen fertilizer. I think that's completely unenforceable. Who's going to do that? I don't believe that the code enforcement officer wants to go around looking to see if somebody's got fertilizer, sprinkle it on their yard and then checking in what kind it is. I don't know that that's a reasonable thing to have somebody have to try to enforce. And then the last one was the donation to put a particle separator at the outfall for the system. And I think that the looking at the size of the pipe, because I did go out to the site and look at it, it's a big pipe. So it collects a lot of water. The drainage system's not shown on the plan, but it collects quite a bit. It runs down right in front of the site on Countryway, the pipe. And you would have a much larger system than I think ten thousand dollars is going to buy to get a appropriately sized water quality unit. The last thing is I went through a whole review of section five twenty Water Resource Protection District and pretty much the Water Resource Protection District regulations would prohibit, obviously, this work, and that's why they're asking for the variance. So I don't know that I need to go through all of those specific aspects of it because pretty much you know, you're not a lot. You wouldn't be allowed legally to build on this if you don't give the variance. The site is in the Water Resource Protection District, but it is also mapped as the Zone A to the surface water supply by DEP and the state. So if you have any specific questions on any of that, I hopefully I can answer them.
Sure. Or Mr. Chessia, in your opinion, can a single family home be built on this house without a single family home built on the lot? I'm sorry, built on this lot without posing a substantial threat to the water supply?
I would say I would say it's probably not proposing a substantial threat to the water supply. One house? I mean, any one house isn't probably going to pose a substantial unless the house was something that had, you know, no septic system or anything else, but
Okay, so so to clarify, do you think the construction of this home as proposed proposes poses, excuse me, a somewhat negligible threat to the water supply?
I would say any house within that distance poses some threat, but I don't believe it's substantial.
Okay. You you so well, that's well, that's so that's something that the board can discuss further. But I think that's important because I I think Mr. Chessia is much more qualified to make that determination than than I am and knowing some of our backgrounds. And I think that he's the engineer we hired and not so that's important to know. I I think if you can provide any clarification on the delta between some threat and a substantial threat, I think that would be helpful to this board. But that's really the extent of that question. It's an important question and one the applicant is going to ask about.
Mr. Morse, I will turn it over to you if you have any comments on Mr. Chessia's statements. The and the question that one of the questions that I have, I think my main question on what Mr. Chessia said, which is I think more most directly addressable is there seems to be a discussion about the the assumptions vis a vis nitrogen on the regarding the septic system. And Mr. Chessia's belief that some of those numbers have been underestimated. So that and whatever other comments that you might have in response.
You are. I'll address the septic one first.
Okay.
So the septic system that we wanted to design on this site was a denitrification septic system that would specifically, you know, denitrify any of the septic effluent. The Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection has a couple of different types of septic systems that are approved for doing that purpose. We chose one of the systems that is approved with the DEP for what's referred to as general use, meaning can be allowed for new construction as a nitrogen reduction system. If the number I used to as the concentration of nitrogen coming out of the thing differs a little bit from what the DEP has done, I took my numbers from a DEP test center. I believe they're outdated from what Mr. Chessia has provided. But this type of system is still the type of system that the DEP would require in this instance for denitrification, whether the numbers, my number or the one that John had suggested.
All right. Any other comments?
Sure.
Chessia's statements.
Yep. We we did provide some stormwater calculations attached to our letter of September twenty nine. When we were before the board previously, I think back in July, the board expressed that you weren't as concerned with the quantity of water coming off of this site, but more with respect to the quality of water coming off of this site. As such, we did not do what's referred to as a pre versus post drainage analysis. That's a very thick and complicated drainage report analyzing predevelopment and postdevelopment volumes of runoff. We didn't have any concern for volumes of runoff or rates of runoff down gradient of us. It's essentially undeveloped land and goes to the reservoir, which I think we would all agree needs more water most of the time anyways. But we did focus on the quality of it. We provided some quality calculations on our September twenty ninth letter. Regarding the construction phase, you know, certainly there'll be inspections during the construction phase at several points. We did have on the plan a crushed stone parking area, a construction entrance for people to park on when they're working on the house. We have an erosion control barrier, which I believe is a staked mulch sock, which is a typical erosion control barrier on on any site in the town of Situate. We had soil stockpiles identified on the plan. We had the measures on there that I believe would be typical of a single family home. If there was something additional, we'd certainly add it, but we've included everything that we typically would use. Regarding the deed restrictions, yes, we proposed a three bedroom deed restriction. We had also suggested a restriction on pesticides, herbicides, fertilizers. I agree with Mr. Chessia. That is hard to enforce. However, that condition is a standard condition that the planning board puts on their approvals in conservation, puts it on their approvals. It makes the homeowner aware of the issue. Enforcability is another matter, but it makes everyone aware. Regarding mitigation, we had offered a ten thousand dollar payment for mitigation for any stormwater improvement project the town wants to undertake. You have a sample now of water at the discharge point on this property. Doesn't seem like it's that dirty. I had reached out to the DPW to ask if there was any sort of list of other water quality improvements anywhere in town that we could put money toward, and they said they would gladly accept the money to put toward a project, but they did not have a list of any specific project. I think we would still offer that ten thousand dollar condition to be held by the DPW for any project that could benefit the town of Situate water quality. Maybe it's replacing a catch basin that discharges to the reservoir. Maybe it goes towards sizing a particle separator at this location, but the town can use it at its discretion. And it would be provided. Right?
Thank you.
I'll look at that.
All right. And let me ask you vis a vis the water quality. The method you measured the water quality at discharge as you it's your opinion, it is not particularly dirty. I read the numbers the same way. It's out of the level of expertise. Is it your opinion that the construction of the three bedroom house as proposed with the septic system as proposed would significantly change the quality of the water that's being discharged?
No, I don't think it would significantly change the quality of the water being discharged.
Do you is is it your what is your opinion about the quantity of water that will be discharged both after the building of the of the house as proposed?
Sure. So the quantity of water leaving this site I think would be increased very slightly, but it would be increased. You're taking virgin woodland, and now we're putting in some lawn surface. We're putting in some driveway surface. We are retaining some water during the smaller storm events. We certainly are providing roof recharge with dry well systems. We're providing holding back some water in a rain garden that treats the driveway runoff. But in your larger storm events, there will be an increase off of this site. Now, this site drains in a southerly direction to the location where the tributary is. What I would say is that the peak rate of runoff from this site at that location would go up if you looked at just this site. However, I would believe that the rate of runoff coming out of that culvert already exists at a higher number. That culvert takes water from Countryway, it takes water from First Parish Road up by the senior center. And so that tributary is capable of handling a larger tributary area. The peak from that culvert is certainly significantly higher than the peak that's going to be generated from this single family home. So I don't think it would have any detrimental effect to any of the down gradient properties.
Open up to the board. Do you have the board at this point having any additional questions? As of right now. Anybody here from the public? And then we will turn it over to just procedurally to folks on Zoom, which may include folks from the planning board. Anybody? Right?
Yeah.
Oh, here, I'm sorry. And I was He's literally blocking me. I am. I am sorry. That's why we're all here.
Yes.
The huge group's standing. That huge group's standing right in front of you. Let's hear from the planning board then.
Good evening. Patricia Lambert, chair of the planning board. I'm here not to be equanimous or contentious.
Okay.
I'm hoping here really because apparently it was approved of a government issue request about something that I said. And the planning board will distribute it for later that you have. Okay, so
Oh, okay. Could you
Yeah, that that's
Do we know what it was that you said that triggered the
I just said that I indicated that I had listened to the zoning board
Yeah.
that you had discussed what was required, like that you were interested. You've been trying to develop this since at least twenty fourteen or twenty fifteen. And I indicated that there are twenty five areas. And it's within the fifty foot tributary. And we asked how can you get various? You Karen told us that you have to type with the PP, the PP, the tributary. And the board as a whole supported that we do not support this project because it's to the water protection and it's to the zoning. So it go a letter. So
Certainly.
Right? You need to read this into the ministry file. It's all, it's, you know.
I I it is part of the file. It I think everyone on the board has read it.
Right. And you've summarized it, which is the planning board does not support this application. Which is what's in the
We're aware. The additional context is is up there. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody else?
Oh, I know.
Because it is
I'm just asking.
Anybody else from the public in the room? What's the comment on this? No. I'll turn it over there and then we'll go to Bob. Do you have any additional comments? Comments from Zoom?
Mr. Chessia.
Mr. Chessia. Oh, there we go. Yes, Mr. Chessia.
Yeah, I just wanted to add one comment, and this is regarding the the pipe and the proposed what was proposed, I believe, is a particle separator, like a swirl chamber to set out to take out the sediment of from the water. And I think that's actually a good idea here because when I actually went to the site to do my site visit, the DPW had hired people to go in and clean the sediment out of the pipe. This is I guess the pipe gets full of sand and sediment frequently. So something at that location near the street that could be cleaned would save them a lot of work. When I looked at it, the pipe had quite a bit of sand and silt in it. And it fills up quickly and they go down there all the time. It was Pete Spencer and another guy that were down there. They had to, you can't really get at it. So you go in with so I just wanted to make that the board aware of that. So it would be a location that would be suitable for something. But the if you put something in there, you'd really want it near the street so that it's accessible to the town to maintain it. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else on Zoom at this point in time?
Yes, I'd like to address
Greg. Sure.
Thank you. Yeah, that if the town decides to do a particle separator there, ten thousand dollars would go a long way to making that happen. Whether it would cover the hole or not, I don't know. If it's getting that much sand in it, it might be a matter of putting in catch basin hoods upstream as well, which is a cheaper fix that may contribute to helping. But there'd be ten thousand dollars there anyways to help with that. Regarding the planning board letter, it's unfortunate that we received this yesterday. They've had this application for five months. The planning board typically requires applicants to submit information to them weeks in advance so that applicants have a chance to look at it as well as you as a board get a chance to look at it. It's unfair for you to have to read something at the eleventh hour. And it's unfair for the applicant to respond here twenty four hours essentially after receiving this letter. The planning board meeting was on YouTube. I did get a chance to watch it today. There were several questions that the planning board asked of the town planner that she was unable to answer. The question was what is the setback that is proposed to the tributary? And there was no response on that. There was also a question of why is the variance being requested? What's the grounds for the variance? And there was no response to that. So looking at the letter itself, it's completely different than three oh five Countryway. Three oh five Countryway is referenced in the planning board letter. Those lots had to comply. There's absolutely no way a variance could be given on those. I wouldn't even think of bringing a variance in front of the board for three oh five Countryway because those were new lots that were being created. This is not a new lot that is being created. This is a lot that predates the establishment of the Water Resource Protection District. So while the tributary itself is the same tributary as three oh five Countryway, this is significantly different in respect to that. The planning board letter states that we don't comply with section five twenty point five DF. Well, there is no five twenty point five DF in the bylaw. There is the D. There's also a separate subsection F. But I would ask Ms. Lambert, what doesn't comply? I believe the plan complies one hundred percent with each of those sections.
Um, yeah, what?
I have a question on the three oh five Countryway because it was referenced because if ten thousand dollars was given and then it was had to give it back because they didn't put a storm
Well, because the town didn't do anything.
Right. So I guess my point is not for the three oh five, but to the we have people, we've had three people tell us that ten thousand dollars isn't what it would take to do that, to do some sort of mitigation.
So
Right.
So I, yeah, I guess I wonder even if they ten thousand dollars were were given, we wouldn't it wouldn't, it wouldn't be enough to do, would the, would the town do it or bridge the, the storm?
Well, that, that, I mean, it's a good question whether the town would, would even do it. We're hearing from Mr. Cheson that um, there is an issue of regarding sediment, right, which the town addresses, we address about cleaning it out.
Right.
Right? I think applicant is proposing ten thousand dollars to be used for any type of ben- benefit mitigation, et cetera, for the drinking water system. Uh, of course, you know, whether it's stormwater or something else, right? So whatever the needs of the town are, um, it can be used.
And is that something, and I don't know how these agreements work, where X number time passes and then you have to give it back? Or is this, the ten thousand dollars would sit there and still forever?
In 305 Countryway sense, based on the letter, it looked like it was for a specific purpose to be used within five years.
Okay.
The applicant could certainly contribute money to the overall cause of the DPW without conditions. Whether or not what they're proposing is substantial enough to make a difference in his application, different, but he certainly could.
Um, Mr. Morris, um, there was also a question um, in the planning board's letter, uh, and we've seen it come up a couple of different times on the impervious area, which um, as you guys have designed it, uh, it's 14.9%, which is underneath the 15% protocol limit. Do you have any commentary on that?
Well, just before we get.
Yes, thank you.
The only relief they're seeking is from the buffer, right? And so I want to make it clear on that is that to the extent another aspect of this application is found during the permitting. And a lot of that will go into if this becomes a buildable lot, then they still have to get a building permit for which there are countless other requirements.
Absol- absolutely. And I, it's not, and it's not about violating the 15%. My question is because of what it is, right? Because uh, right, the increase in the impervious area, generally speaking, will increase runoff, generally speaking, et cetera, right? So I'm just in the more global sense of we're trying to deal with the 150 foot buffer. The spirit of behind the 150 foot buffer, right, it's, it's intended. I just, uh, I wanted to know if you had any comments there. And then I have a question for Mr. Creed. But.
Sure.
Mr. Morris.
Sure. So I, I heard a couple of things there. The first one with, with respect to the impervious land area. This, this plan, as you see it, proposes 14.9% of the lot being impervious land area. It's approximately thirty-two hundred square feet. Fifteen percent isn't the maximum lim-law in bylaw. Maximum allowed bylaws is 20%. So we've got some wiggle room there. The 15% threshold um, requires that a roof runoff be recharged. We're doing that anyways. So even if we were over the 15%, we would comply with the standard for it. But 20 is the, the max allowed.
Thank you.
The second question there, go ahead.
No, no, I said thank you. Go ahead. Next question, go ahead.
I'm, I'm all, all set with the impervious coverage.
Um, Mr. Creed, I had a sort of related slash unrelated question for you, which is.
So you're somewhat conflicted?
Uh, no, whether it's related to the exact, it's related to this issue, to the larger issue. The what is, what is the tax rate on this lot? Is it taxed? Is it being taxed as a buildable lot?
I, I believe it is and most towns, I believe situat is, is in sync with most towns. Then unless and until you obtain an abatement, you're taxed at the buildable rate.
Right. And nobody has sought, as far as you know, an abatement on this lot.
Not that, not that I am aware of. No. You'd be hurting your own argument if you, if you didn't seek such an abatement.
Just checking on the facts.
Sure.
Bob, we haven't turned to you yet today on this issue. Any commentary on what you've heard today from the building department's standpoint?
Well, building, not so much, but zoning perhaps.
Okay.
And I'm not qualified to evaluate runoff or what this minor might not do to water quality of the stream, but strictly from a zoning standpoint. I'm recalling that we've allowed homes, new homes to be constructed on lots which don't be for whatever reason present in zoning requirements. Uh, there's one on EI fairly recently. There's, there have been others. If the lot exists prior to the initiation of the zoning requirement, which makes it which disqualifies it from being a building lot, if it's um, you know, been approved prior to that, if it's never been owned in the case of a lot that's too small uh, by a butter so that the merger doctrine would look in. You know, various tests need to be given, but at the end of the day, a pre-existing approved lot that is only not able to be approved because of a zoning requirement that was put in place after the lot was created, I, I think that's a very significant consideration.
And just so that we're all aware, um, the 150 foot buffer was, is it correct to say that that was put into place after this lot was created?
I honestly have not researched that. Don't have it on the top of my head, but I believe that is the case.
Greg will, and I think we may have established that in the first hearing.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember if we established it, that's why.
Do you?
Yes.
A 150 foot buffer zone is somewhat recent in terms of our bylaws.
It's in the eighties.
Nineteen eighty-seven.
Okay. And less recent than I thought, but.
And this lot was created?
In the sixties.
In the sixties.
And that's clear. Go ahead. To Bob's point. Eight twelve. Do you have more?
No. I just wanted to say.
All right. Any more commentary from the folks in the, uh, public audience, from the community? Here? And any more commentary from the community? Oh. No, please. Stand, your name, your name and.
I'm Stan Bonzum. And I believe this is probably the only lot that the town has granted a right of way through. Uh, and it ends with.
Thank you. Anybody from Zoom that has any additional comments?
We have uh, not have Bruce.
We don't have Bruce, right?
No, but we did hear from him significantly at our last hearing and I had traded some comments as chair previously and to reiterate those for, I, I certainly summarized it, but they felt that the purpose and intent of the bylaw was to not have anyone build within 150 feet of a tributary.
That was their point.
So they felt that you're defeating the purpose of the bylaw if you allow. I'm struggling here. I I've said many times on this board that I, I'm not a fan of this bylaw. I think it's overly broad and I think it is a disaster to try to enforce and interpret within Massachusetts zoning law. And I think that this bylaw needs to say you can't build within unless and it needs to get more scientific about what needs to be done or not be done. And I think by doing that, this bylaw becomes far more enforceable. I think there's no guidance as to exactly what can't or can be done. Well, I guess opponent of this bylaw would say there, there is gaps, right? You can't do anything. The problem is you can't do anything with land. It's not super enforceable when it comes to courts and appeals.
Correct.
And.
And that's not the standard for a variance.
Right.
It's not an absolute standard.
And the determination of whether what is being done or not being done is being left up to this board with guidance from applicants and peer review engineers, but I, I just don't think it's, it's a great situation. And I think the town has the idea behind this bylaw is good and important. And if it's that good and it's that important, the town owes it to itself to do a better job with this bylaw. Quickly, the, the varying standard, which is the most important thing here. In my opinion, this lot is unique. We could argue about the geography or whatnot. Overall, when you look at it as a whole, which is how the case is doing, this lot is unique. If we enforce the bylaw, there's absolutely hardship. It makes the lot not buildable. It's the biggest hardship there can be. Little enforcement is a substantial detriment. We did that. Can we give them a variance without substantial detriment to the public good? In my opinion, the public good here is hurting the water supply. Our own engineer just said, it's not a substantial detriment. I, where I get hung up is the standard is and you can grant a variance without nullifying the intent of the bylaw. We, I can't grant a variance without nullifying the intent of the bylaw. Where I'm struggling is the intent of the bylaw is in overreach, if that's the intent of the bylaw in my thinking. And I don't think it stands up when and if it is challenged. And to Bob's point, we grant variances against bylaws that make lots not buildable when the lot predates. And here there's an argument on behalf of the applicant that our engineer isn't entirely disagreeing with, that they've taken steps to protect the water supply. Looking at a strict view of the variance standard, I feel like I can't grant a variance. Looking at it another way, I feel like I have to grant the variance or that these folks deserve to build here if they take the proper precautions. Honestly, I'm inclined to not grant the variance and hope that this gets sorted out. That it's, it's not, it's not.
Yeah, but they, basically they, they appeal it and, and.
Yeah, it's, it's funny, but it's, but it's not to me and I don't mean to chastise you for that because I've got a thousand times at this table.
No, 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 no. I, I was talking about the.
I, I, I'm very careful and I've caught plenty of heat for voting and approving applications that I thought we couldn't turn down. Here, I I don't like this bylaw. I, I think it's, I think the town deserves better, but that doesn't change the fact that the bylaw is incredibly clear, right or wrong? And I don't think I can grant a variance without nullifying the purpose and intent. So I certainly can't grant a variance without nullifying the intent of the bylaw.
Right. In, in, depending on how you read the intent, right? So.
Like a different. Yeah.
The deal is, is the intent of the bylaw safe drinking water? Right? And, and is this a situation where building this three bedroom home on a pre-existing lot that the applicant gave reason that they're, you know, gave, gave a uh, 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 an easement to the town, which is what arguably is causing the 150 foot issue, right?
Right, right.
Um, whether building, okay, all that happened, but whether building this house puts in any real way um, the safety of the town's drinking water at risk.
That's the counter.
I think that's, I agree with you completely.
Right? Um, so it's, it's how do you read the intent or purpose of that portion of the bylaw? So I am also conflicted, right? Because of that reason, but you know, I, 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 you know, at some level, you know, applicants could argue that this is just a complete danger, right? Are the voting.
I mean, our not voting numbers can also talk.
Yeah, but.
We're just going through.
They're not, I'm just going, I'm just going.
I am struggling because I don't think it's our job to say that the bylaw is overreach, so they're gonna go another way.
That's right.
I mean, I'm struggling because we aren't, as a board, we are not supposed to say, well, this one's an overreach, we're not gonna help that.
Yes, we're.
And that's my biggest, that's my biggest struggle. But I, I agree with what you've said and I'm also interested in our.
Gentlemen, we had previously did a discussion about additions or renovations within the buffer zone. And I think there has in fact been those that haven't come here probably, would they have come here, Bob? Or is it if it doesn't set anything off, it goes to you, you approve it and?
Typically, it does need more approval, GTA approval, if it's within the um, zoning. And so if it's within 150 foot of the buffer, probably within the zoning, so probably they come.
We've, we've done it at, at least a handful of times, right?
Where we've approved the variance.
We've approved it hasn't been a variance when it was.
It's simply a special permit.
We've gotten a special permit.
But construction activities have been, have occurred within this buffer zone.
Now, right.
Vegetation.
That's a more complicated question that we, we've had from time to time. Was our granting a special permit and not a variance in those instances proper? That is a, that's a full note of volume there, if you will.
I mean, the distinction was obviously that there was a house there.
Right, that's right.
All right.
Right, those were all situations. They would have all been situations where there was a pre-existing. Love it. I think there's a provision within 520 that allows for special permits to be granted for, for renovation and, and whatnot. And that's why we weren't granting variances. And we, we've done this analysis before, but after. Yeah, question.
Erosion, cement, vision control. Fire.
Design operations, 520.5, which is the design and operations guidelines. And anyway, we have granted relief for substantial renovations and even additions to homes which were pre-existing built within 150 foot buffer. I do not remember, and I think, Bob, we talked about this at prior hearing on this. I do not remember granting relief to allow for the construction of new home within 150 foot buffer.
Right.
Then any existing home after that buffer was implemented, I mean, for all we know, or, you know, beyond their life expectancy, other septics, you know, there's no inspections or anything. So arguably, there could be home within this buffer that are much worse than anything in the law.
Oh, I, I don't even think that's our group. I think they're absolutely are.
That was, that was.
They're, they're made, I think, and Greg presented.
I'm reading, I'm reading here to this house.
I, Greg presented, I think that there's, that there's 61 homes just in this area that are within 150 foot buffer and.
I Greg presented, I think that there's that there's sixty one homes just in this area that are within a hundred and fifty foot buffer and.
But what, closer to the reservoir, correct?
Yeah, it's very unlikely that any of them will be as clean in terms of how as this one. Because of the precautions that we put to ensure.
And again, I think it goes down to what do you believe that the intent of the bylaw is. Um, and and whether whether it's really destroying the intent of the bylaw, I can't.
And again, I think maybe the answer is.
So. So. But let's simplify it, the gen- the intent of the bylaw is to protect the drinking water. We've proven, or the engineers have proven that. His denitrification septic system. Cleans the water. He's recharging groundwater, you know, that we're all required to do will be go over fifteen percent. He's gone through all the measures to make any runoff from this site cleaner. It's a justify, you know, cleaner than what we normally laugh the road through towards into the street. He's got, he's got a rain garden, he's got, you know, septic systems and recharge systems and whatnot.
Pretty hard.
So, the intent is to protect the drinking water. He's doing. Nothing subst- already said, not substantially increasing what's already happening now.
And we don't have to guess as to the purpose of the non-disturbance buffer zone. The purpose is the title of section five twenty point one, that's right. Um, the purpose of the Water Resource Protection District is to safeguard and protect the source of water supply. Bylaws intended to preserve and maintain the filtration and purification capacity of the land, groundwater table. Purity of groundwater table and the and surface water supplies and to conserve the natural environment to protect.
The public health.
Yes. The standard. Want to clarify my earlier point is without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose. Of the bylaw.
You were putting in a gas station without the nullifying the intent or purpose. If he was putting in a sewer treatment plant. It would be nullifying. He's putting in a house.
And putting in a house.
Permanent structure.
So put permanent, permanent.
Other than associated with providing public water, so he's putting in a house, yeah, it's number three.
And.
I think so. Yeah, I think it's. You define and take is what you're doing. Um, and I think your analysis is. Is the purpose of this bylaw to prevent building? Which I suppose you could look at that statement that Ms. Harrison just read and say, yes, that is the purpose. But you you're conducting a take. Because the only thing that this lot can be used for is residents. And in my May sixteenth submission to you. We showed you what the planning board represented to the town at a town meeting when it was adopted. And it it basically was sold, if you're in a residential zone, you're still gonna be residential. Except the the added part that, oh, you're in a residential zone, but you won't be able to use it for a residential home. I mean, if that's the intent of the bylaw, then because the bylaw is, you know, in this instance, a per se take. And you're condemning Mr. Bongrison and yourselves to several years of litigation to decide that. Um, which seems to me an entire waste of time. Uh, given that the ultimate purpose, the real true purpose of a water resource protection district. Is to protect the water resource, not to prevent building if building can be done in such a way that it does not substantially derogate. From the purpose of the bylaw. Purpose of the bylaw shouldn't be to prevent building. If 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 you were building a structure that purified water under that interpretation of the bylaw. That wouldn't be a lot because it's a structure.
Okay.
I mean, if if that's, if that's.
And that's not the purpose of the bylaw because that's not what the purpose section says at the start of the bylaw.
Right.
It's protect the water supply.
So if 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 it's, if it's nullifying the purpose. Then I would say my reading of that bylaw is the purpose of the bylaw is to protect the water supply, not to prevent building. Because preventing building doesn't in and of itself necessarily protect the water supply. And and ultimately, we're talking about final law. Ultimately, we're finding, we're, I mean, we call it a tributary, okay, DEW calls it a tributary, but it it we're talking about stormwater. We're talking about drainage.
Yeah, uh, to your point, Anthony, right, purpose is here stated. Um, you know, the bylaw is intended to preserve and maintain, I'm reading the second sentence, maintain the filtration and purification capacity of the land. The groundwater table. The purity of groundwater and the surface water supplies, right? So we go back to that. To your point. You know, is there, um, you know, effect on the groundwater table? You haven't granted, you could really change that. The purity of the groundwater and surface water supplies. We have those mitigation uh. Components in place and we have testimony that there are plenty of other situations that are far worse as far as. Um, uh, the fact of the purging of the groundwater and surface water. The the sort of, you know, are we preserving or maintaining the filtration and purification capacity of the land, right? Is it the same? No, we've heard testimony that it's not the same. Have they, have have the engineers taken steps to improve it? Above and beyond what would have otherwise happened with a standard three bedroom house and a standard septic system? Sounds like yes. And to the point you made before with, all right, one house isn't substantial. Is five, is ten, is thirty, when do you stop?
Whoa.
When you stop is when they don't meet the variance standard. And if. This lot wasn't a validly created lot before the bylaw went into place. And in my opinion, if it wasn't this type of tributary. And it was an actual stream that has been there forever. Then you don't meet the variance and and a lot that was just created or a lot that's.
On a lake.
Or that's a a brook or within a hundred and fifty feet. Of the reservoir. Doesn't really, because it's not a unique characteristic of the land.
We've talked about tributary, we couldn't define tributaries already at the time, right?
We're not defining, good, for tributary.
But we can, we can say this tributary is better than this.
We certainly can. Yes, it's it's a tributary, it's a, it's a. Like geoscientific fact, the determination they made. So it's it's the one hundred and fifty foot buffer doesn't want, right? So that, I mean, from that standpoint, but with respect to the impact, right? And the and the variance standard, you can, I think we can absolutely consider the nature of the tributary and opposite the nature of the land.
I can't imagine a situation where another lot. Would have this same situation, so even. You know, to the point of we're not nullifying, we're not. If somebody came to us next to another tributary. We apply a standard, all the same again. It's not, we haven't nullified, we haven't changed, we're not settling, we're settling a precedent here if we made a variance.
Sir. With regard to that, the issue of a of a tributary, certainly Cherry said it correctly. The water in this easement goes into your drinking water supply, that's fact. Um, and it's not disputed. But you can look at a source of the water. That is contributing to your drinking water supply. And this is not a stream, it's not the Colorado River, it's not the Mississippi, it's a, it's a drainage easement. So it's street drainage coming from countryway and other sources that that contribute to that that point. And end up in this, in this ditch and pipe and then ultimately into your reservoir. Which in and of itself is an issue, I would think, and apparently an issue from everything that I've heard that this issue, DEW doesn't take an interest in. Uh, wait, no, I'm not, I'm not, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm not trying to derogate from DEW. What I'm trying to say is that that mitigation, if a mitigation measure is offered, ten thousand dollars. And it's not gonna be used in this particular instance, but it can, and we've offered, you can use it any way you want, we're not gonna, we're not gonna ask for it back. But I would think. That dri- street drainage going into your drinking water supply would be a priority for the protection of your drinking water.
I don't think anybody thought it wasn't a priority and I didn't take any of the. Indications or information that we got from folks on behalf of DEW that. They they didn't, that they weren't paying attention to this, you know, they're cleaning it. I I think the inference was was that ten thousand dollars was insufficient to correct the issue. But I think we're all best served by putting the ten thousand dollars on a caution aside for a minute. Since we're getting down to the ending, we're getting overall variances.
My other point would be that the way I view the the non-disturbance buffer zone provision. Is as a regulatory measure to supplement the purpose of the bylaw. As opposed to the purpose of the bylaw. And if you look at it that way, I think that that that's a a different view of it. In other words, I I agree, it's terribly drafted, it's inartful. And it makes it almost impossible to do anything.
All all adjectives that are a little bit unnecessary.
But it's.
Come on.
Well, no, I mean, you've you, it 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 precludes any construction whatsoever. It precludes almost everything. But I don't think it's the purpose of the bylaw. I think it's the means of enforcing the bylaw as opposed to the purpose of the bylaw.
Right, your point being the purpose of the bylaw is to create a water resource protection district.
Correct.
There are a number of things that go into creating a water resource protection district, a number of protections that are referred into place, right, this is one of them.
Correct.
I I think that's, that's a fair position. The. Putting inside fertilizer. Or able, they're they're offering some. Above and beyonds to the typical precautions that are built into a septic system and a home and for drainage. In order to seek to qualify for this variance.
Right.
Is your office in a position to make sure that those are built?
If this were subject to a stormwater permit, there would be a town-appointed engineer like Mr. Chesty. Uh, that would follow the job through construction and sign off on the aspects of the site development concerning stormwater. That, um, you know, were implemented. We don't have that ability.
Okay, but but it sounds like we do, we hire an outside engineer.
We would need to hire someone.
And and that comes to be at the applicant's expense presumably?
Uh, it certainly does with a stormwater permit, yes.
Okay.
This this particular development sounds like it's not subject necessarily to a stormwater permit. But it's certainly the board could condition something along those lines.
And I, it's safe to assume the applicant would be amenable to a a a condition. That we hire an an engineer to track.
Let me just check the decline.
Of course.
Do you understand what I'm, I don't think you heard, you understand what I'm getting at?
If we were to track or monitor. There, the the plan includes certain safeguards and above-beyond precautions that you wouldn't see on a normal application of the septic system or roofs. And it is more towards the type of things that you'd see on on a home with stormwater permit. And to Bob's point, there's typically an outside engineer that would sign off on that on the town's behalf. Because if that level of review goes above and beyond what Bob's office is typically asking.
Putting Greg's stamp though, sort of, be the safe, like Greg's got its control.
Well, which is that's that's what's to be built, whereas in as it was actually built that way, but.
That's right.
So if you're looking for somebody to workforce these details here.
Yeah.
Yes, correct.
Check, check boots.
That then impact this is what's being.
Valid.
Uh, right.
You could just do a final affidavit or something by way of Greg, what do you?
Well. She would, typically, it's not done that way.
Right.
There is a town-appointed reviewing in here that.
Uh, Mr. Morris, yes?
Yes, thank you. Um, you were talking a little previously about the hundred and fifty foot no disturb setback and how. You've approved some other projects, additions to single-family homes, et cetera, through the special permit process. You know, I think, I think it is important to note that if you look at the bylaw five twenty point four. Um, A, the non-disturbance zone, there are four things that are specifically prohibited in that hundred and fifty foot buffer. All four of those things already exist at this site. There's already been earth movement and disturbance in the hundred and fifty foot buffer here. There's already been vegetation removal. There's already been placement of a permanent structure, the drainage pipe and the major culvert head wall. And there's already a subsurface discharge of stormwater drainage. So, all of those activities already exist. It's very similar to, um, you know, as you say, you've allowed. Expansions on pre-existing non-conforming homes in the buffer. All of those things that are prohibited specifically already exist at this site.
Without a building being.
I would have no problem. Yeah, I would, I would have no problem and I imagine Attorney Creed's gonna concur after talking with Mr. Bongerson that. Yeah, having a, having a a review engineer do site inspections is common practice. On any of the sites typically that we work on with conservation or planning board. You know, I I think that's a reasonable condition on a site like this.
The answer to the question was yes, so long as we have input on the engineers that are in the mix for you to decide.
Sure, yeah, the town has a. Has an approved list, I think there's five engineers on it. Last I saw, Mr. Moore certainly be familiar with that list. Um, and it's, because as he pointed out, it's a pretty common practice.
Yep.
Um. Mr. Chessy, are you still with us? I have one more question.
Yep, I'm still here.
Is there, we've got a, an advanced septic system. And you mentioned a rain garden and some other things that are on the plans that you've seen. Are there any systems or additional precautions that are not on this plan that stand out to you that would be helpful? In this scenario to provide additional protections to the water supply? And I I I'm not looking for for necessarily specifics, but a, oh, this sort of system or something like that.
I mean, I don't know that there's any, as far as like the septic system, there's only a few that give you nitrogen removal, that's what you would have to do.
This is, the system they're proposing is is one of those systems.
It's one of those, it's one of those that's created for that.
My, my understanding, yes.
Um, and there are others, but I mean, they're all kind of similar in a lot of ways.
Yes.
As far as the drainage goes, it's pretty common to put the roof to an underground system and to put. Um, surface flow to something like a rain garden or an open sort of system. I think maybe one of the things that you might wanna consider is. How to permanently protect that fifty foot, because when somebody lives there, especially. If, I mean, more than likely, this would be a lot that's built and sold or sold as a build. If, I mean, more than likely this would be a lot that's built and sold or sold as a buildable lot. So the people that are here in in the room and doing all this aren't necessarily the ones living there, more than likely, I mean, I'm not saying for sure, maybe. The owner wants to live there, but frequently these places flip and then how do you? It's on the deed, the three bedroom restriction, but you kind of want to make sure the new owners recognize the location. The new owners don't encroach on the buffer zone and the new owners, you know, recognize the importance of the of the site. So there may be some conditions or some requirements you might want to put on to try to make sure that it's understood going forward. What the deal is.
And the applicants have proposed a physical marker on the site of the conservation area and the buffer zone. And then Bob, correct me, but any further. Building permits for exterior work at the site. Would once again fall under what we were talking about and would require at at least a special permit in the in the way that we've granted before.
Correct.
Because you're still capable to monitor.
That's right.
Right, and building issues.
Yes.
Right.
So, thank you, that was helpful.
Yeah, well, I'd just say, one of the more frequent things I've seen is that not everybody likes the rain gardens when they buy a place. And they're often filled in post completion and approval.
Or enforcement.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I would tend to want to put the rain garden, like the markers may want to include, say, the rain garden. So people look at it and say, even though it's part of it, it's not something to be altered.
Right, that's what I was gonna suggest is markers similar to conservation markets delineating those areas that are no disturbed, including the rain garden.
And it's, the enforcement is not perfect, but when a home is purchased, title search is done. Recorded documents affecting the home come up, special permits are incredibly common, variances are not, and they are paid attention to. A though a lack of compliance with variance conditions.
Yeah, I'm wrong.
It it voids certificate of occupancy on a home.
I believe you're correct.
So it's it's not, it's not, uh, not taking life lightly. So, you know, are 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 we going to continuously enforce the precise maintenance of a rain garden? No, is someone going to be able to fill it in and still be able to get a mortgage and sell the house?
No. What what you may want to consider is a attaching twenty D note. Uh, an as-built plan that delineates the non-disturb areas and as part of the variance. I mean, you know, you can put all the deed restrictions you want on the deed, but you know, I don't know too many of my clients who actually read the deed. Um, and they only end up reading it if they ever read it at all when they sell it. But if you attach a plan to it that delineates those areas, um, it's a little harder to deny it at any point down the road. And that's part of your concern is how do we enforce these restrictions and conditions that we want to put on this if you're going to approve it and grant a variance? I I think perhaps the only way to do that is to is to actually attach a plan that delineates those areas that can't be disturbed.
So he's he's already got a couple of these no disturbed markers. Your plan is something that says we need no disturbed markers every twenty feet along this and borders, the rain yard, the hundred, the fifty foot zone and all of that.
Right, with however you however you condition, we can put together a assembly in that by eleven figure that'll be attached showing that the relevant areas.
Is this, is this registered, Greg, do you know? I I don't know if your initial application sheet.
I don't, I don't believe that it is recorded then, I believe it will be.
So you, Morse would be able to put together a recordable plan, wouldn't it be an A and R, not doing anything with a lot. But you could put together a recordable plan that a mylar could be recorded standalone or it could be submitted so we could record it with.
Yeah, I would recommend doing it as a D and a half by eleven, so that's pretty much, it could be attached to the deed, not on a separate plan.
Yeah, and we could, we can attach that to the variance and we can condition that it goes in the deeds, but then people forget and. But at least it's on there, I I do like the idea of a plan laying out the fifty foot. And the markers and the rain garden going on with a potential variance.
You you could extend the condition to require that we um, give you a copy of the deed showing the plan attached.
Yeah.
That'd be something easy for us to do, just a copy of the deed and we need to give it to to Bob, I suppose.
Anything? Yes.
It is.
I would call it an A and R.
Yeah, it's just, it's just in in fifteen years of the property trade.
We're having so much fun.
For the second time, it's a, it's something that's difficult to keep track of, I. An recorded plan showing a restriction on a property is 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 a significant.
It's something you'd have in your file.
Um, yes. Well, what else we got?
Eventually, laws will make a decision.
I never heard of that, but it's uh, I'm I'm trying to make a list here.
Yes, ma'am. Lingua del um. What makes, what I think makes this unique, I I don't know anything about the scientific aspects, it's way over my head. But it's a unique lot because the town needed the stormwater easement and that is what created this problem. Now, if we weren't going to all this time and expense to make it so that it's not harming the drinking water. I I mean, I'm just looking if we said no, it wasn't me, but as long as our family said no to the town, for the easement that they needed. And has created this problem, we wouldn't be here. Um, and to say that they should give, you should give it to us because the because the family gave the town the easement isn't good enough, I know that. But if we're trying to resolve a problem which everyone seems to think we are, we're not harming the 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 drinking water. I I just think that should be taken into consideration too, because I don't know how many people come here looking for this relief. Because they gave the town something that has rendered what was a buildable lot, no longer a buildable lot.
It's not insignificant.
I think it's, it's an important factor.
Okay, but but I understand the most important factor is the drinking water. But I'm just pointing that out in the background, we don't think you'll find another lot that's done with with this with a plot.
I I think you are correct, there's a very unique feature of this lot. I I'm making some notes.
Just just on the design here, it's a garbage disposal, now we're not about to have a garbage disposal.
That that's correct, actually, a Title V requirement is if you have a garbage disposal, it will make you feel less to be fifty percent larger. And in the hundreds that we've designed, they've never actually done that. Right, just remove it from your disposal. Because what it does, it breaks up the solids to a very fine point and then again through the filter, it'll make you feel a lot better. Paul, the law's a retired home inspector, he thinks garbage disposal is a good idea. Yeah, that really aren't a show. They're all anywhere, that's true stuff. Well, no, he had a garbage disposal, he was on town, so.
The tie? I I I think we've, I think we've we've done everything, I think I think we we have, we have a member that is still struggling. And I think that that is fair.
And that's that's why it's.
I I agree, I think we found the purpose. I think we're taking precautions to protect that purchase, that purpose. And I agree very much with what you said, that we shouldn't be granting variances or giving any relief. Because we think a bylaw is bad for us. But at the same time, I think we are further putting this bylaw out on a branch that is going to break. And if it breaks, it leaves the town without the bylaw. If we overinterpret this bylaw, right, because if it falls, it falls. If this bylaw goes away.
Oh, yeah, it will go away, it's it's.
Then then someone doesn't need to come to us to build within a hundred and fifty feet, someone doesn't need the nitrogen reducing. And and that's a, that's a real concern. The best way to protect a bylaw would be to redraft it to provide a serious condition.
Yeah, I I agree, because I think the best way, if we recognize something wrong, is to redraft it, not require someone to sue us to redraft it.
And yes.
If I can say it as timely as possible.
Yeah.
I, you know, I.
And I think we are all in agree, I mean, I'm not trying to figure out, I think we're all in agreement with that. Uh, and I should be on the record that we we find this problematic bylaw. And for, I think as a whole, as speaking of. Where is hold, we were there, then it should be redrafted in a way that makes more more sense and makes more enforceable.
I think we've, I think we've done a lot just with this case to help them start redrafting.
I I think it needs performance standards.
Right, and in performance standards that require technical expertise that boards don't have. But a performance standard that says you meet this standard for FLON.
With peer review and.
And then and then Mr. Chessy, it could be hired clearly with a clear delegation of duties, which we absolutely did not give him here.
Yep.
And I and I appreciate what he gave, despite how murky his instructions were. And then, uh, it gives everyone a a chance.
Who would have thought such a system technology would have changed between ninety eight and ninety nine?
Well.
That we had this opportunity.
But and that's a, that's another point.
The Title V was totally rewritten in nineteen ninety five.
Yep. Alright, um.
And I also think we should talk extensively in our write-up about how um, unique this is with the rationale.
So I will.
Not that I'm gonna do this right.
So we will go.
So.
So this is, this is gonna be interesting to you.
So, to your favor, if if a variance is granted, it is in everyone's interest, most importantly, the applicants to make it a well-crafted variance. In the event that the variance being granted is appealed by another body within town or guy in a bunker with standing. So I I uh, I expect that the applicant and their counsel would be hopeful in that regard.
Or someone else who wants a variance, or some other, you know, they've asked, asked, you know, asked us to accept it.
We, yes, and anyone who is able to appeal, can appeal it and they start with the way the decision is made.
We're gonna send you a draft, I mean, very well.
Yeah, correct, so.
Thank you.
I.
Well, okay, let's, we gotta take a vote first.
I'm going to make a motion that this board grant a variance. So and I want, actually, we're gonna hang on a second. I'm planning on making a motion to grant a variance to for this lot. To give relief from the hundred and fifty foot buffer zone and the and to reduce it to a fifty foot buffer zone with with several conditions. I I think we need to find quickly, other than that, does the proposed home shown on this plan require any other relief?
No, no.
No, it does appear that it does, I got a building envelope here, the the. This is a buildable lot, it has the required frontage in width.
Yep.
Even given the corner, so that's the only relief that we need. I'm gonna make a motion that the board grant a variance from five twenty point four. For the property of five Williamsburg Lane to be constructed as shown on the Morse engineering plan dated four seven twenty two.
As amended.
As revised nine twenty seven twenty twenty two. With the condition. That variance is conditioned on the. I'll refer to them as mitigating improvements regarding septic drainage collection and the like. As shown on the plan and including. The no disturbance markings as shown on the plan. And adding no disturbance markings with respect to the rain garden. Fantastic. With the further condition that the. The town be allowed to hire a, what's the term, it's not peer review, it's a peer.
Well, it's a re, it's a review engineer.
A review engineer for the construction process to confirm. Such improvements are being built in accordance with the plans. At the applicant's expense, also of course, what the applicants can put on that process. And under the condition that Morse submit a plan. Which obviously removes a lot of the data points that we have here, more appropriate for reporting the land records. Shows the fifty foot buffer. And the location of the rain garden and the septic. I um. In the review of that decision, we, as we go back and forth, we're going to end up clarifying some additional conditions. None of which will be conditions that weren't discussed at one point.
Mm-hmm.
Or another in this hearing and we'll advocate in the minutes, but I don't think there's gonna be any disagreement on that. You you know, the the vegetation, so I mean, anything not caught by the motion but mentioned as a mitigating factor in here.
Extension, that is correct, right.
Uh, and the additional condition that if the applicant. Deposit ten thousand dollars with DPW. I uh, I don't think DPW doesn't want that money. And and I think that, well, it might not be sufficient to solve all of our problems, maybe even in this exact neighborhood, it's not nothing, so.
So I would ask one last thing is the restrictions to pesticide and fertilizer.
Uh, yes, just because it's hard to enforce doesn't mean we shouldn't try.
That that's, yeah, that was my point of that. So I just wanted to make it clear that.
Add it.
Uh, please.
You're, I have no standard for being where the applicant is allowed to pick their own peer review engineer.
So I need to, I need to clarify, because we've had this conversation with the planning board before.
Yeah.
The applicant picking their own peer review engineer is by no means what we were inclined. I reviewed on this application and another, because the planning board expressed some concerns. The applicant absolutely does have a statutory right to be kept apprised of that process. And to give input in that process. Does their input need to be adhered to by a board? No. But if an applicant was told, no, we don't want to hear your thoughts on a selection of a peer review engineer. And then didn't like the peer review engineer, they would be able to vacate that peer engine, peer review engineering board. So I I did the research on that, but it is an important clarification. That the applicant shall be kept apprised if he will be selected, they will like, very likely come from the town's list. And that, you know, to the extent the applicant has comment, they will be turned out.
And that's my motion.
I think that's, I was thinking, I think that's the motion. I second the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye?
Aye.
It is unanimous. It is unanimous.
Who's gonna rewrite five twenty point four?
Well, he's gonna we're we're all we're we're.
That's the number of questions.
Yeah, we're all.
No, I said who's gonna rewrite five twenty point four.
Oh, who's gonna rewrite? Oh, I forgot that it's it.
That's that's it.
Yeah, who's gonna who's gonna rewrite five twenty four?
That's a. No, we need a we need an engineer and we need and we need DPW and more resource.
The problem is it's got a chemi, I mean, it's real standard.
That needs scientific expertise in order to put the standards in place. What's your timeframe on an initial draft for me?
It's your timeframe.
Uh it's really your timeframe. You have you have ninety
Or we have ninety days.
If ninety days.
Ninety days. And if we need extensions, we can anyway, you can do extension.
Yes. And then uh whenever it gets filed, you got whatever it is, twenty one days, thirty one days, appeal period.
Twenty days.
Twenty days.
I'll sit down with Greg and we'll try and get something within the next two weeks.
Great.
It's an initial draft date.
Yep.
When he comes in, Janine, she notifies the board and then we we take care of him.
We did have one question. Oh, I I thought you had.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Thank you, Mr. Chessie. Yes, both of you. Thank you very much for all your input and hard work on this.
Thank you. Good night.
Janine, any other business?
Um minutes.
Yes, which ones?
Uh last month's regular meeting and then the ten four continuance of the forty B meeting.
Right, the ten forty continuation, all those. Yeah, the actual.
Sentenced, yes.
Right, sentenced. So um I move to approve both sets of minutes.
So.
All favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous. And with that, we will adjourn. Um sorry, before, if we didn't shut off uh just on on the on the record, it's for folks who view it on recording, uh I did reach out to Attorney Jeff that we see, it's just some additional business regarding the status of that forty B application. Board has not received any provisions to the plan and obviously we're had a couple of continues this. Uh Attorney Delisi responded to that email, explained, sort of seemed to agree that um that those materials weren't coming together maybe quite as quickly as as even the applicant would have hoped. That some of that is because they're going back and forth with the peer review engineer and also because the water testing in their conversations with Concon, I think, and some other stuff, maybe it was DPW.
Soil testing.
Soil testing what were far more extensive than anyone thought. The long story short was they didn't know that they were gonna have everything by way of engineering reports, especially the effects on our lands to us in advance of the hearing, but they would absolutely have a revised plan showing the revised units, a reduction in units and where they would be situated situated a week in advance of the hearing, which is.
I was I was told I would have something by Monday, the twenty fourth in the afternoon.
Oh, right.
If you're having me by then, so. He's the first first Tuesday?
Yep.
Yes. So with Monday or Tuesday, this coming week, you would have to be in place.
Alright, uh thank you. Of course, uh with that there being no other business, you adjourn.